Okay, welcome to our Monday, February 5th, 2024 Commissioner meeting. We'll start our meeting with the Pledge of Legions. So the first item on our agenda today is employee recognition. We have a few here today. In celebration of thirty-eight years, Lisa Rossiter is Lisa here. Thirty-eight years of service to the county is a big deal, and we just want to make sure that we pay attention to that and let everyone know.
Likewise, we also have Dan Bishop with twenty years of contribution to the county government, which we are very appreciative of and definitely want to recognize that. Is Dan here? Oh, on it, please.
Okay. The next item on our agenda today is sand strategies. I know Zach Sands here.
There's only one copy of these?
Yeah. Well, good afternoon. Really, today just don't have any specific ask besides a letter of support like to have approval on. Besides that, really want to just give more of an overview on our next level connections, round four opportunity. NLC round four, if you guys remember this, eighty million dollar bucket of money from the state broadband program that allows individual providers to apply, to leverage that program. And then what's highly encouraged is for the county to participate and provide some type of match to get the scoring up to ultimately get awarded the application. It's a highly competitive application. The challenge also is, though, typically we only have three and a half weeks to move on these applications. The state just opened up this grant January tenth, and it closes this Friday. And so by time providers get to know the other addresses that are available for them to do their engineering designs, get total costs, and then also working with us to see if there's enough to provide a match is super challenging. I know at this time, we have, we don't have dollars appropriated for broadband, so it's sometime at a later date. I know we're also been have a conversation with members of county council, so do want to look at some point, you know, the opportunity of considering putting inside a match. So when these applications do become available and providers are bidding on these projects, we can have those hours available to move quickly with the with the provider on there. There's really been three providers that we've been talking to on leveraging this program, two of which are here today and are going to kind of update you a little bit on that, whether they plan to submit an application or not. We do have one other provider that is not here today who does plan to provide or does plan to submit an application with no request. We do have one that has made a request that I'll let them kind of speak to a little bit about today. And then what you also have in front of you there is just overall letters of support from community organizations, so part of our broadband task force, which are very potential putting that together. Every industry is represented on there from education to healthcare, local governing officials, the state reps, state senators, farm bureau, essentially every industry that's starving for broadband, have letters of support to any provider that does submit an application for them to include those letters of support, which is included in the scoring process there. One other piece about NLC round four, there will be an opportunity the first week of April, which is known as the competitive application process, where say if a provider submitted an application, another provider could come in and essentially, you know, bid on that application, do it for a cheaper cost, where the county could still at that time still provide a match with the provider. And then lastly, another program I've know I've talked a lot about before too, that's ultimately coming is the is the BEAT program. That's the eight hundred and sixty-eight million dollar program from federal government, the federal infrastructure package that will be coming. That program will be broken up into three tranches. The first tranche we're hoping to see hopefully late summer, early fall, and then will be subsequent after that. And that's another opportunity where it'd be very similar to the NLC application process, whereas providers, you know, bid on addresses and then ideally the local unit of government is there to hopefully provide provide a match. But with that, I will hit pause. As I do have two providers here today that are going to kind of speak to some of the investment, the private investment that they've already made in the county and some of those partnership opportunities in the future. But with that, I'll be answering any questions from you guys. Okay. Great. It doesn't matter who goes next.
No.
Okay.
Well, thank you for having me. I'm Jeremy Burton, Government Affairs for Comcast Corporation. And unfortunately, in round four, we're not planning an application for Woodley County. We just don't think that the pool of money is big enough, but certainly plan to be in late summer or the fall. However, I did want to announce tonight that Comcast on its own dime is going ahead and building an extension to two hundred and nineteen rural homes in Woodley County that we're going to begin work this year. And we're coming from the Allen County line, and I actually have a map of the area. If you'd like to see it real quick.
That'd be great.
But we are not asking for any subsidy on that, and we look forward to serving families.
Could you email us that map, Jeremy?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
That's okay. Yeah, if you could email, that'd be great. So you're looking at Lincoln Way and Old Trail.
Yeah, we'd like to thank Dale Buick and Zach Sand for helping us, you know, make this investment here. It's no small part to their efforts, and they're easy to work with. We're very appreciative. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Chairman Banks, can I just take a quick look at that map? I'm just trying to get seen that. Just out of curiosity.
We appreciate your investment in Woodley County.
We do. Thank you. Would you like to look at?
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you for coming.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Gene. I'm the CEO at Surf Internet. And I just want to thank you again for giving us an opportunity to come. You might remember me have been here a few dozen times. So, you know, we met like a year and a half ago, and the commissioners, two to one, approved a grant for one point seven million dollars to serve. And our part of the deal was we were going to make an investment in Woodley County. And so here's a list of what we've done since we last met. We've invested one point two million dollars building fiber for the schools, five point three million dollars building Columbia City, one point four million building Cherubusco, five hundred and seventy thousand for Blue Lake, three hundred and fifteen thousand for another phase of Blue Lake, nine hundred and fifteen thousand in South Woodley, two hundred and four thousand in Larwell. We won a grant for State Road one oh nine. That was a hundred and seventy-four thousand. We're building out the Connectionway Industrial Park and Gateway Industrial Park for another three hundred and some thousand. So altogether, ten point four million dollars have we invested in the county in the last year. So we are planning on bidding on next level connect round four, but you should know, I mean, this is really embarrassing because we know how underserved Woodley County is, but in terms of potential grant points, Woodley County is ranked seventy-second out of ninety-two in the state. So there's eighty million dollars, as Jeremy pointed out, but there's virtually no chance Woodley County is going to get funded if Surf goes at it alone. There's actually very little chance it'll get funded if you agree to give us one point seven million dollar help, but it gets us higher. So what I will tell you is that we are looking at building fiber to one thousand nine hundred and forty-four additional households in Woodley County. And the way that shakes out, Surf will invest two point three million. We would look for one point seven million from Woodley County, and that would be matched by the state for one point four million for a total of five point four million in in funding. If we do that, and if the county were to conditionally award the one point seven, we would score a hundred and forty-eight points out of a possible two hundred and fifty. So, yeah, it's not, it's not good. I'll just be honest with you. It's pretty bleak, and it's really sad for me because I know how underserved your residents are. I've seen the audience filled with people who can't get broadband, and this program is probably not going to help. But we're willing to put our best foot forward. We spent over fifty thousand dollars engineering this grant application and put our best foot forward for you guys. So what I'd ask for is that you vote to conditionally approve one point seven million to surf if we're granted the next level connect round four funding. And if it doesn't go through, you just don't do it. And if it does go through and you don't want to do it, you still don't have to do it. We can always decline the funding. But if you don't agree to at least try, we'll put forward our best effort, but it's pretty unlikely it'll be funded.
So that five point four million investment, how many addresses will that serve?
That is going to serve one thousand nine hundred and forty-four. There are six hundred and sixty-six that are eligible for next level connect. There, out of all those, there's only one that the state deems as priority. I think the whole county only has nine or something. It's a pretty six. It's a pretty embarrassingly low number. To put it in perspective, Stark County has over five hundred. And I just don't know what's going on because we, you know, we work with the county broadband commission. We got people to sign up for the ICP program, which is what funneled into this program. So I'm just not sure why the county didn't get more eligible addresses. But anyways, it'll be six sixty-six eligible, one priority and one thousand two hundred and seventy-seven other addresses that will pass to get to the six sixty-six at the state that are eligible.
Now, are those addresses concentrated in one area or is it littered throughout?
Well, that's the beauty of this is that they are basically in every township in the county. So not to bore you, but there's fifty-six in Cleveland Township, eighty-five in Columbia, thirty-two in Etna. I can share this with you.
I think I've seen the list. Zach shared the list with me. I think I
Yeah, it's across almost every township.
I mapped that in Excel, and it looked like it was just littered throughout the entire county.
What we're trying to do is build a foundation so that we have network that's ready for the next thing that Jeremy from Comcast mentioned, which is BEAT. We want to be ready for that. And really what BEAT is intended for is high-cost rural households that are very expensive to serve. And just like a little bit of backstory, when we bid on next level connect round three across all the state that we participated in, the average cost was six thousand three hundred dollars per house. And what's left in Woodley County after this is going to be an eighteen to thirty thousand dollar range. So it's just really, as you know, it's very rural. There's very few houses per mile.
So talk a little bit about the scoring and why we would be so low.
Yeah, good question. So there's twenty points out of two fifty for project readiness. We think we'll we'll max that out, so that's twenty. There's ten for impact on the community. We think we'll be pretty close to maxing that out. It's, these are all people that really, really need it. There's fifteen points for meeting the technical requirements, which we'll do. That's, you know, gig service of revivers. There's five points for community engagement. If you invest in this project, we get some letters of support. The team have been good about getting us letters. Zach and the team, so we'll be good there. So then there's forty points for covering over five hundred households. So we'll get those forty. Then there is sixty points for the amount of grant requests. So full, full amount, full amount of points is when we and the county provide seventy-five percent of the funding, and we only ask for twenty-five percent. If you go from twenty-five percent down to thirty percent, it takes ten-point jumps. So basically, when you get to fifty-fifty, which is kind of where we would be if you didn't participate, that's for just that part of the score would drop from sixty to thirty-five. So another twenty-five points off just for so really, the only chance we have to make up points is in the matching amount. And then the priority score is based on every three priority address, priority addresses in the county get one point. You only have nine, and so that's only a maximum of three points. This project actually only covers one, so it's zero points. So that's zero out of a hundred. So that's why we're ending so low.
Do you think we had low participation in our speed tests program? Or like, how is it that we ended up with so few that were unserved?
You know, I think it's frankly because we and Comcast and others have been doing a good job serving the county. And so all the feeder addresses in this program are all the people that haven't been funded by some other program before now. And so because we've been using the ICP program to get five, ten people every month, we're checking those off the list, and so now they're not available for this.
Yeah, I mean, I took this speed test from my own home, and there's addresses on my street that are on the list as arguably, I believe, arguably underserved. And mine's not on there. So I don't, I don't know what makes that, why that is, but I know we all have the same internet service provider, so it's strange to me, but it makes sense.
So, yeah, our request is to pencil in a one point seven million dollar grant. You don't have to fund it. I mean, obviously, the council has to vote on it, and in the unlikely event that the state would award it, you still would have a chance to not do it later, but
Right.
we at least could put our best foot forward and try.
I know that in the past, council had a concern about, you know, like, if this is awarded, then how much, like, they wanted to anticipate how much more in the next phase, and then the next phase, and then the next phase. And I know that's, that's hard to drill down. I mean, that's impossible to drill down. But I think from my perspective, and I believe maybe from some of the members of council's perspective, it's we, you know, I understand that this is a need in our county, and I'm supportive of it. But I would want to know, like, what, what is the cost, overall total cost? Like, what is it that we're working toward? Instead of just, you know, a little bit in this project and a lot in that project, and then a little bit more here. So if awarded, then you would tackle those one thousand seven hundred something addresses.
Almost two thousand, basically.
And when would that be completed?
Yes, we complete within two years.
Within two years. Okay.
And so as others mentioned, so there's a challenge process that happens. So we, we would put a bid out, and then Comcast Frontier and other providers, Bright Speed would all have a chance to try to do better on it than we would do. And so I think you'd have an opportunity to just fade in that, too.
Okay.
So as far as a total build out, thinking you guys were coming with that number, maybe I misheard.
It's the balance, if after this grant, the balance would be between twenty-two to twenty-five million to finish up the rest of the county. That's totally all in cost. So, you know, a large portion of that's going to be funded by by Surf. We have to go after grants for, you know, for that, and depending on the point scoring for BEAT, it would be a variable of a portion of that for the county.
But the minimum federal requirement is twenty-five percent. So if it's a twenty-five million dollar bill, you're going to have to contribute twenty-five percent of that. That's a minimum. And this can be very competitive, as you can imagine, so you probably have to do more.
This, this is, you know, this is eight hundred million for the state, but it's also competing heavily. You know, Woodley County is competing against Washington County on the, on the Ohio River. A very rural and very highly challenged community that, you know, would have the opportunity to score pretty well. So it will be limited. It will be just as competitive in the B round. Yep. And just for the sake of our meeting minutes, can you state your name and your organization? I know you're with Surf.
Yeah, Steve Karander with Surf.
Okay.
That could put a little bit.
Yeah. There's a question for you before you start. We do see other organizations expanding in Woodley County, like Lake Tell, for example, who they're currently borrowing Loon Lake. We haven't heard much from them. What's
So, no, they are putting it out. They're the other prior of the three that we've been talking with. NLC, they are the third provider who are going to be putting an application, and they are not requesting a match at this time. I literally just got Mike Trout and with Lake Tell, and he said he's going to buy tomorrow, should have me, the amount of address they plan to serve through through NLC round four. So, but like I said, they're not requesting any match. We've just, the only thing we've ever helped them with so far is just everything, including a broadband ready community that we've talked about before. So that's the way you know, those permitting fees create streamlined process, single point of contact. And then we also helped with all the twenty-some letters of support we have from everyone, too.
Okay. Do we know, like, what their plan is or applying? But like I said, we just haven't really heard anything from them. Maybe you have, but I don't, I don't know what their plan is.
The biggest challenge is like with, these guys have three weeks, but you got like, essentially the state says these are the actors that are eligible. And then from there, they have three weeks to put all the other hand come to us and ask for a match. So as soon as I get that from them on, hopefully tomorrow, I'll send that to you guys.
Okay. Yeah, just the answer.
Yeah. And then, good, I just kind of conclude a little bit, just as these speech operations come, like, so this is the end all, you know, be all as far as like this, this final is NLC round four, there will be an opportunity still in April for the competitive application process, and then ultimately like the BEAT program that we have in coming as well. And some other providers, too, like, sure, they've done a great job to the, when you mentioned ICP program, that's a program where it allows individual residents and businesses to apply. For built, essentially, they go on the state website, apply, and then their house like lights up on a map, and then these providers are able to bid on those, those addresses. And then we just kind of talk about those priority addresses. Those are, those become priority because they weren't served through ICP. And so, you know, talking to somebody that the double-edged sword sometimes because ultimately, it's great that they're sharing these addresses through ICP. But also, once they serve them the recipe, then they're no longer eligible for as priority address because they're served. Sometimes it's a double-edged sword and probably they go after those. But like I said, my recommendation for you guys today is just to approve the overall letter of support that you guys have for today. And then, you know, from there, we'll February or this Friday, we'll know essentially everything that's been submitted. And that's a little of that competitive application time, and also ultimately that will be coming up, too. And there's also other opportunities outside the grant in other counties we work with, too. There's other one-off opportunities. It's more of a fixed wireless solution that's, that's cheaper. But then the day, I mean, fiber is kind of the gold standard and as far as the most reliable service. And just to kind of give you a picture in the neighboring county, in Allen County, through NLC round four, so by NLC round three, we were awarded a huge grant there. And then with NLC round four, if awarded, total Allen County has happened to invest about five million dollars in partnering with these providers on these on these grants to ultimately serve the whole county. So I said, it's, I know it's expensive to build this out, but I said, there are other, you know, lower cost options that are out there with more like a fixed wireless solution that is also out there, too, that are from providers who are providing here in the community. So.
So I think I'm a little taken back because I, there's been some conversations in the last week, and I guess I didn't think that was going to be an ask today. And moving forward with BEAT and then also knowing that it's twenty-two to twenty-five million to get the entire county built out. And that twenty-five percent has to come from the county, correct?
It's from the provider and the county.
So we have so many, what's that?
It's twenty-five percent from the provider and the county.
Okay. So I guess, so we've got some ARPA funds. But with the BEAT program coming up, I guess I'm just wondering what the best thing for our dollar will be, if it's better to partner. And I really appreciate everything you guys have done, like, I do, like, you, you guys have done a wonderful job and have done everything you've said you're going to do. I guess I'm just wondering, as you're, you know, the expert in all of this, should we save this per county our size, you know, that's a lot of, realize that. So if we did earmark some of that money, would you recommend that we say, okay, let's at least try, or should we save those funds for the B round? I guess what would be the most effective way to get everyone served?
I think to kind of Commissioner Banks's point, I think you guys really got to fully understand the picture, like, what is overall, you know, project cost look like? And talking to members of council, too, I think they'd like to have some, some multiple providers come in and present to those guys as far as overall, what it would cost to to build, they kind of, kind of even map it out saying, hey, this is how we'd like to, you know, build up this portion and leverage. And I'll see, this is how I like to build out this portion and leverage the first round of BEAT. And like I said, with those different tranches, too, as you move in through the boot feed program, the very last tranche is what's called for high-cost areas. So those are those passings that are, I mean, like, you know, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars plus that are, you know, very high expenses that are going to likely have to be served through a fixed wireless solution. But like I said, that's why my recommendation today for you guys is if you're going to make a motion on something, it would just be for that letter. And then that way, you guys, as we have more providers come in and kind of give you guys a total scope of, you know, on paper, what project cost, total project cost looks like.
Do we have that letter in an email or?
I have it. We can talk about it. So, yeah.
Yeah. So I would certainly be in favor of approving a support letter. I would just ask that we have Andy to review it before we sign it. But aside from that, I don't, I don't have any problem with a support letter. I think that's a great idea.
I think honestly, that number is a lot lower than I was expecting. And I think with the BEAT program and, you know, private dollars, I think it's absolutely doable that we can serve everyone or at least get pretty darn close. I think ARPA funds would be appropriate, and I also think seeded funds would be appropriate as well. You know, as a project for the next few years, so we can capture these great dollars. Because if we don't, we are going to cripple Woodley County for decades if we don't get these people served and these businesses served. I do think this, it's worthwhile. And again, I so appreciate you guys. So I'm so sorry that you're not going to get the answer that you want, but going forward with the BEAT, I mean, I definitely think that the county would, you know, be open, open to partnering with you guys. So.
Also, I think the challenge is the timeline. I mean, state does not give you guys enough time to be able to, these applications are open. These guys put together their full designs and get and do these full applications, and then, you know, within like, you know, three weeks' time to be able to make, okay, guys, we need, you know, one point seven million dollars to move on this now. So I said, that window, I know that's makes it, you know, very challenging, but there, like I said, there'll still be an opportunity through the challenge process, the competitive application process, first week of April. And then ultimately, the BEAT program, too.
So just a quick question, why do you think the state does that? I mean, I don't understand. They've known this is coming.
Originally, this program was supposed to be opened up in April of last year and didn't open until literally January tenth. I mean, it's just kind of the nature of it being highly competitive, like in, you know, other counties that I work in, and now kind of, kind of council appropriated those funds for broadband months ago. So then they had the commissioners that were able to quickly be able to act on that, an opportunity like that. So.
Well, I appreciate you being here, and I know you're super busy with the session right now. So thank you for taking the time, and we'll see you throughout council as well.
Okay. Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Steve. Thank you, Gene.
Yeah.
Thank you, Jeremy.
So I would entertain a motion to tender to really approve the support letter pending attorney legal review.
So moved.
Second, you have a motion. A second, is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote. All those in favor, raise right hand. Opposed, same, that passes.
So they're, they're going to prepare the support letter that we review, or they want to
Sounds like Teresa has a letter that's been drafted. And I would just ask that you review that to ensure that we're that there's not any surprise liabilities or
I'll forward you that right now.
Okay. Yeah, this is for the council.
Yeah.
But it's similar.
It should be similar.
Yeah, okay.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda today is Leslie Lately from the Center.
So today I have two items to present for signature. Pass these with a blue pen. One of these does have to be signed in blue. So I'll pass all of that, and then let me kind of talk through what I'm sending down here.
And there's only one spot to sign.
One plot on each item. So the paperclip stack at the top is the vehicle purchase agreement. It's a single agreement for the purchase of two transit vehicles during this year, this calendar year, twenty twenty-four. I don't know yet when we will receive those vehicles, but we have placed the order for them. One is a medium transit bus, which is a twelve passenger, twelve plus two passenger. And another is a low-floor minivan, and that's, both vehicles are heading inaccessible. That's the vehicles that we need this year to continue our fleet and maintain that fleet as, as it's appropriate. So you'll see on the first page, it talks about the federal share. For any capital purchase, federal share, we receive eighty percent. The remaining twenty percent must be covered from local share, and you'll see a federal share of one hundred forty-seven thousand eight eighty-seven with a local share of just under forty thousand thirty-nine eight thirty-eight. And so I'm just submitting that for review and for signature. I will tell you, local share will do some fundraising, but we actually have all the money already raised for this because a vehicle was totaled last year. And anytime a revenue service vehicle that was federally funded is totaled, insurance proceeds have to be set aside in a completely separate bank account to be used toward the purchase of future vehicles. So while I do hope to, to raise some funds and then just let that continue to grow over the next few years, we have enough in the bank to cover 100% of our local match this year. So that's a really good position for us to be in going into that. So in that document, it's page two that would require a signature and that's the one that does have to be signed in blue link. Happy to answer any questions about that purchase agreement. And then I can talk about the other is just our regular quarterly voucher for quarter four of last year. And you'll see our request is to receive funding in the amount of $91,624 with an exact match and local match as well. And that's just to receive the indot funds that were earmarked for Whitley County Transit.
I move to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Maybe just for clarification, is that the vehicle purchase or is it both?
Both.
Okay.
Do we need a separate motion or is one okay?
You can do it together.
I think we can do it.
Okay. Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, everybody in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed, same.
Also, just to put on your radar, I know it's on Tiffany's and Cammy's radar, we are up for a full compliance review from indot this year. That is a process I've not been through before, but I've been working closely with Tiffany and will continue to do so as we're getting preparations ready for that. As I know more, I will let you know, I actually received confirmation on dates today, so I'll be sending out some calendar invites. Just so we all have that on our calendars and everything. It, no surprises, it was what we were expecting. So I know you've already got that on your radar. So just a heads up of what's coming and it will be later in the year. The full compliance review, the site visit will be in November of this year. So we've got some time to get ready. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good evening. Thanks, you too.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is an easement approval for our colonial city in their Chimp Hill.
I'm going to get short and sweet, I won't sit down. What I'm here for, I think it was, I can't remember how many months ago. It's been a while since my month spent, but this is the agreement, the legal agreement that we will, you know, get an easement for the trail off the high school. We'll perform all the, you know, fences and everything that that, the highway property needs. So yeah, it's just a signature on that.
Yeah, we had a few options when you were here last and we, we selected an option, but it's been some time and I think we're, we're going to the south of the salt barn, right? And then cutting in behind the humane society.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, we're going to do everything that is requested, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, just hopefully someday we'll get a trail there. I think it's been going on six years, so.
It's always sad to see students walking along, along State Road nine, get to school.
I know, and we, this hasn't been, my boss is not watching, but DNR came back. We've got full proof from DNR, but they came back and said, we're hitting some hiccups with the railroad because Gen C Wyoming leases the railroad, but Norfolk Southern, I may be speaking out of term there, I believe owns it. Gen C Wyoming gave us the full approval to go ahead and do what we need to do. We had to put crossarms down for the whole road and that's during car time. And now Norfolk Southern is holding it up. So there's a little gap there, so DNR wants us to break it into two projects. So initially, we're going to go after connecting the high school, just at least getting safety down into the community. So that should happen this year. We're, bids are expected to go up next month.
Is Norfolk Southern not wanting you to utilize it?
They are not. That's why I didn't know, I know Dale might have some connections there too, but yeah, they're not receptive at all. They're just blind. So I, and Gen C Wyoming was incredible, or I think it's Gen C Wyoming, then Chicago or Fort Wyoming, Chicago. There's so many different dogs and the years there that.
I didn't realize that was in Norfolk Southern.
Dane Tate is the gentleman who covers that area. I know him pretty well, happy to reach out.
That's why I'm going to do with you, so. Yeah, just, I avoid just one signature and we'll get going from there and I'll keep you guys long.
So who should be the parties to this easement?
That's what I don't know. I don't know who signs it. It's through the city.
But, but it's from, the, the schools own this land?
No. Oh, I gave you the wrong easement. I will forward you the cut. You got the school's easement, sorry. My bad.
How long do I get?
I will forward Tiffany to the next direct easement tomorrow morning.
I saw that and thought maybe it was because it's.
No, because we've got, no, we've got one with this, I've got multiple easements out for this project. I've got one with the school, I must have scanned it and completed one.
But the, the, the trails.
The city is building the trails. The city will take all of it.
So how's the county involved?
We're allowing, he's been on county owned property.
County, yeah, see, okay, I got it, I got it, I got it.
Yeah, I'll forward that to all you guys.
Yeah, sorry. No, that's okay.
It's not a huge, huge rush. It's, I mean, we've got a month or so, so.
Yeah, so maybe we'll take the election today. Yes, we'll make sure that Andy gets a coffee and then we're more than happy to approve.
Okay.
Once it's been legally reviewed and all that.
Just listen. I will forward it to you.
I mean, for the. You won't either. I, I don't even see a reason for you to come to the next meeting, but we'll, we'll have it as an agenda.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Have a great night.
Yeah, thanks for the information. Next item on the agenda is Ryan Gadsen from the Highway Department with a right of way permit.
Good afternoon. Just have a right of way cut permit that needs to be, it's been, I've reviewed it. I don't see any issues with it. With the cut across Wolf Road approximately 2,165 feet south of Whitley Road. One day project to connect a tiled grain from one side of the road to the other.
So is this an open cut, Ryan, or is this a bore?
It'll be a cut.
Okay, okay. And they understand their liability to repair the roads? And after that's done, who inspects that? Did we go out and inspect the work?
Yes, the highway foreman will go out, look at it, make sure they put it back to real grade and then we'll.
Yeah.
We'll patch it in spring, probably once it settles more.
And when we pass it, did they pay for that or?
Is that what the BS4, the 750?
Yeah, they pay $500 for cut across pavement. A dollar for it, or if it's less than 99 feet, $100 for trenching, excavating, plus the $40 application fee, so $640.
If I remember correctly, did we go out there and do like a quick video of it and then go back out to make sure that it's put in the same position or better?
Probably, I'm sure Scott will go and do that and make sure.
So they're doing the work? So the, the landowner is doing the work themselves?
The landowner is Austin Fearnow and the contractor is Fearnow. Far green, far green. With the, it's a different address, but we'll go along the road.
Yeah. So they'll be responsible for road construction signs and road closure while it's open cut?
I mean, we may provide those, but they need to let us know when they're going to do it.
And how long do they anticipate having the road close?
Just one day.
Just one day?
When this is to put some new tile in for their own property?
Correct.
I have no issues with it.
Yeah.
I'm going to approve the request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'll open it up for discussion. I'll just make this one comment, well before you were the highway director, probably before the previous highway director, someone did an open cut. And they didn't down the fill and there was a, every bit of a six to eight inch drop that went down into a trench and then back up. And it wasn't very well marked, it wasn't very well filled and then it wasn't very well marked. And people were hitting that at, you know, anywhere from 45 to 55 miles per hour. I just want to make sure we're not, if we have someone who's not familiar or not, who doesn't frequently do these open cuts, I want to make sure that we're made, that we are ensuring that it's done correctly.
But I, I will call him and let him know this is approved, but I'll also ask for a start date. We'll get someone out there to take pictures and then ask him before they leave the site to contact us and go out and make sure it's been refilled properly.
Yeah, okay.
And we'll keep an eye on that, yes.
I think in fact, he's the landowner and the contractor, he has a vested interest in it. I'm sure that it's done right.
I agree.
But yeah, probably gives a thought here.
We'll keep an eye on the project.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second to approve right of way 2024-7. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. And opposed, same, that passes.
And then there's no smell this winter.
Still in winter.
I think you guys are bored.
We're keeping them busy.
I have it. Something different.
I guess this is. Ryan, I'm meeting.
Yeah.
We'll have that back, right of way.
Sorry, was I not?
Okay, next up, we have Nathan Dilger for flat approvals.
Good afternoon. I have a number of plaits to be looked at, hopefully you've had a chance to review the electronic versions already. We'll start with CHL addition, that's actually in the Sherbusco zoning jurisdiction, but because it's in the jurisdictional area, it still has to go before the county commissioners because it is unincorporated. So what this is, is basically a replat of an existing portion of an older subdivision. They're taking, they own a couple lots, they're replating it all into one lot. Some reasoning behind it, but basically they're always going to own both of them together, so go ahead and make it into one lot. This, it does stay front on to St. Row 205, so there's no additional right of way being granted because of that. There are of course easements being dedicated for the public. So any questions on that?
I entertain a motion to approve the CHL addition.
Second.
I have a motion, a second, any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
Okay, next one I'll do is Blue Triple Edition. This is actually just up the road from CHL, a Blue Lake Road. This is a replat of a portion of Zolman's addition. Zolman Drive connects up to Harold Road, as you can see there. Zolman Drive is a public right of way, but the road itself is privately maintained for whatever reason, not sure how that originated. But it's essentially been treated as a common driveway for the two or three houses back here in Zolman's addition. At some point in time, part of Zolman's addition was sold to the adjacent owners along Harold Road. That was acceptable when that was done because our rules allow for that without the requirement for replating. However, the lots running onto Harold Road have since been sold out of common ownership, meaning that this now effectively created a new lot in Zolman's addition. And therefore that triggered the need for plating so that we didn't have any legal new lot being generated, like third lot out of what was originally two lots. So that's what this one is. The intent is to sell this lot off for, well, basically to sell it off as its own, so make it buildable.
I have no issues.
We've approved Blue Triple Edition as presented.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve Blue Triple Edition. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
We'll go over to Brands Field next. And coincidentally, these two are next to each other as well. So Brands Field addition is at 450 North and 350 West, not too far away from Tracy or Lake. This is a situation where this plat, or excuse me, this property was allowed as an agricultural only property when it was originally split a few years ago. Under our subdivision code, we allow for non-platted properties to be split if they're over 10 acres for ag purposes only. You guys have all been on the plant commission, you've heard this before, sorry. But now the new owner wishes to construct a residence on it, which triggered the plating. So nothing's really changing the boundaries. We're just plating this, dedicating right of way easements.
I have no issues, I make a motion to approve that request as presented.
Second. I have a motion in a second to approve Brands Field acres. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your hand. Opposed, same, that passes.
And then the last one is located about a mile east of the previous one. It's actually within eye shot, we're out there on 500 North. And this one is, is a more normal situation where we have a property being split into two lots. Lot two already has a house on it, lot one is being sold for a new house to be constructed. They are looking at constructing it on the south end and they've already gone through drainage board approval for construction within that easement. This too is dedicating county right of way and easements, of course.
Make a motion to approve the request as presented.
Sorry. I have a motion in a second to approve S and G and those subdivisions. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand.
We vote for you guys to sign a little later. Hey, you found it. We pass that. And I emailed you guys earlier today, just as a reminder, the county code, at some point in time, I'm not sure when it was officially designated, county code 33.07 designates the seventh day of February each year as Whitley County Day. That is recognition of February 7th, 1835, being the date that Whitley County and I think 14 other counties in Northern India were born by state statute. It was when the name was officially applied to this county and the general bounds of the county were described. Few years later was when we actually became kind of an independent government, April 1st, 1838. So you can kind of take, take your pick, most places say 1835 date as our first day. 1838 may be like our department's or something. So, so I just wanted to let you guys know that since we're so close to the Whitley County Day.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Scott Wagner from the Health Department.
So I'm here to talk about Development Committee, started several years ago for county employees. And with this last year, we only had about 12, 13 people that participated. So we met together, Cammy and Jennifer and the Health Department nurses and us to talk about how to revamp that to get more participation. And so Darcy has already been out to departments asking for people to participate and has gotten a few more people and she can continue to do that. Also looking at changing how we approach that, possibly bringing it to departments, different shifts of departments that have shift changes so that people are being interacted with and not possibly have to come to a meeting or a day that they might be off or whatever. So we're hoping to revamp a lot of that, big participation rate or. we're hoping to revamp a lot of that, big participation rate, or so, like to continue that if that's all possible for your blessing on that, the same percentage of discount for their premiums.
Hey, this might be a great, a great chance for you to announce Darcy, what her role is with the county.
Yeah, Darcy Hubingardner, who, uh nurse practitioner at Parkview Health, is uh put in a resignation at Parkview and will be part-time until uh April, and it should be full-time with the County Health Department, acting as a nurse in that position. Official title is Community Health Nurse, and she'll be doing a lot of things that the state feels is important, but also we feel important to county and working with the other two nurses in our department to fulfill those obligations.
Great.
Happy to help, yeah. So if that's okay with you, to continue that program as is, no changes specifically, we're hoping to get more participation, better uh insight on what people really want, how we can make county employees healthier, and then hopefully take that program to the county as well, introduce that, uh to get their community healthier.
Yeah, I think it's an important program, it's, it's been proven to help in the past with keeping our um premiums lower. And I'm fully supportive of the program, so.
I agree, it's a good incentive and it's our employees out and active and overall reduces the cost of our premium to.
Approve the request as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the continuation of the wellness program. Any further discussion? And then I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand and opposed to saying that passes.
An update on the septic ordinance, as you know, this last year in July, the state legislature banned all existing county ordinances and that we had re-applied to the state for that, we very re-applied once. It's an honor process, January tenth, I resubmitted our ask on that, a much pared down form of our previous ordinance while asking for three things that will be more restrictive. One was the perimeter drainage, which we've been doing since two thousand eleven. One was uh have the disclosure form filled out for sellers and buyers for changes in your property. The third is not allowing subjects within our conservancy and regional sewer district areas. And they told me those are too restrictive and difficult to work with, so it may be a while before we can resubmit, so.
So are they, are they standoffish about the idea of not allowing for septic in a sewer district?
Or is it mostly? Says the state code doesn't have that language in it. They're hesitant to approve something at that lower, at the county level. I explained to them that these were created to protect the waters and that these boundaries were established and that we've been keeping septic systems out of these areas on purpose for that. But because it doesn't say it's state law, the only thing that they can refer to in state law is total thirteen, which says properties within three hundred feet of sewer line, you know, they have to connect and all that kind of stuff. Sometimes there's those rare instances where we just say, no, you can't do it because we're trying to protect the water and our previous ordinance had that language in it, that was up to the commissions. So now that that's gone, it kind of leaves us open a little bit legally. Um but when I suggested those three things, they thought it was too restrictive and that the review panel at the state would not approve those things, even though we've been doing it for over a decade, sometimes around here, two decades. Somehow, that didn't work.
Ordinance is two thousand seventeen, is that right?
Right, that was the most, but that was just revising.
Sewer district was established.
Right, but we've had the Conservancy District and the Tri-Lakes Sewer District prior to that where we, we're giving them to get that out. The current state law that in some form or another started nineteen ninety. And then it's just been built upon, then two thousand eleven was our last state law change, and then we adopted ordinances along the way to help us have a better control over septic issues with the county. But the state, in all their wisdom, is saying that that's too restrictive, so I don't know. I don't think just hammering them back and forth, I think we just wait because currently there are restrictions in, no, excuse me, there is legislation being proposed that will further restrict the Health Department and its ability currently in legislation, and if that passes, we would have to re-adopt another ordinance again. So my statement to the state was, well, I'm just going to wait until we see what happens with the legislation. Right now, we have good compliance with contractors, nobody trying to do things that are fudgy. On our permit applications, we have recommendation versus minimum state law that they can check. So we're not violating anybody's rights, we're just recommending, hey, in our experience, this would be the way we would go. So far, we have not had any issues with that, as long as you feel okay with me continuing with that process.
You talking about a lot size?
So that is something that they specifically stated in the legislation of last July, that the county could not have require second set of sites, the Health Department could require a set of site area for divided lots. So the, we did say that, they sent out a prefabbed ordinance that said, this is our recommendation, you adopt this. So I took that and put it into place, and then they objected to their own language in that, so.
Thirteen twenty-six doesn't, doesn't allow a sewer system to prevent septic on a ten acre or bigger site. So I wondered if you added a ten acre exemption to the county ordinance if that will.
I don't think so, I think they're just against anything, I mean, there's movement in the legislative process to move it from the Health Department to the Building Department, all septic inspections, so. I think there's just people at the state that don't like the Health Department and they're trying to hammer us in anyways. We're just trying to make sure they know the old reason we have a septic law and restrictions on septic installation is to protect groundwater and surface water. And so we, you know, we want to make sure that we leave that for generations. Even though we do have tight clay soils, we've had tremendous problems with surface water issues in Whitley County, and so we're trying to prevent that by making sure water stays on the lot, so.
Well, thanks for the information.
Sure, yeah, I, I don't think there's any reason to move forward until they see what legislation's going to happen again.
I agree.
Just running around in circles, so. One, one comment they made that this, you know, the current, current state law that was passed last year allows for holding tanks, but only if the county adopts the ordinance, and I said, I'm okay with us not having an ordinance that allows for things, so.
I can tell Nathan and the crowd is excited about maybe building the car. I'm kidding.
We got proposed right now.
No, but it was suggested in committee, it got thrown out for now, but.
Yeah.
It's been the last three years, it's been something new every year, so.
All right, well, thank you, Scott. Uh next up, we have Mark Surtova.
Good afternoon, I'm here to uh seek signature on the contract for the Atlas Building Services project, this is the restoration on the courthouse tower, section two would be the last one. And we'll have the entire courthouse redone. But I'm here to ask for a signature on the contract.
Hey, Mark, um currently our policy is to have all contracts reviewed by the county attorney. And I'm hearing he hasn't received this yet, so I'm not sure that we're prepared to take action today. Does it, is there like a?
Kami said she said it.
Timeline on there?
I never got it.
Is there a timeline on this, is it due by a certain date, or?
They just won't put us on the schedule for this year until we, they get a signature.
And that's kind of important, I know that.
I know, we've talked a lot about this, um and I know that this is the last phase. I know, I've looked at it, so I would be comfortable with um having everything signed a contention upon um having the Foxberger reviewing it.
Yeah.
So that, I'll make that, that's my motion.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion of second to approve this contingent on legal review.
Can you email it to me or? Yeah, I don't have your, yeah, I'll give you the.
Yeah, that'd be great, yeah, I'm sure you have a card or something.
Yes.
You have a card?
I don't know, I got. Okay, get on your phone, my contacts are already here.
Perfect.
Yeah.
Okay, so what we're talking about here is the uh tuck pointing and stealing the limestone, and just for everyone's reference, we've done all four sides of the courthouse. And this was a five-year project where the fifth year, we would do, what's the technical term for?
It's the, it's technically the section that the louvers are on.
Yeah.
That section right there is the last.
Okay.
Everything else has been done.
Absolutely, and then this, we anticipate this to be good for the next decade or two, right? Like, they say maybe twenty years before we would need to do this again.
Correct.
Um the cost on this, the contract price is two hundred, two thousand seven hundred seventy-three dollars. And that's right in line with what we, I think this is actually lower than the four sides, right?
Uh it's a little more.
Little more, okay.
You mean together, or?
Well, each side.
It's, it's a little more.
Was, okay.
The reason it's a little more is because to get to the section, they're really big lips that we have to bring in on the courthouse court to, to reach that area.
Okay, so I have a motion in a second on the floor, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand. So you'll just hold on. Uh next up is the solid waste in our local agreement, no, Andy, you did receive this, right?
Yeah, there's only really two substances changes, it doesn't really impact us much. The price went from fifty-three dollars to seventy dollars. And then the penalties just went, removed a fixed dollar amount in sites and statute to, to reward the penalties. Now, the only other thing I'd point out, the dates are changed, obviously, because this is the new agreement. We've talked about not wanting to do, renew automatically, renewing contracts. However, this does have an definitive end, twenty twenty-seven, it just renews in the interim, you can terminate it thirty days before the end of the year, but it, it ends definitively no matter what on twenty twenty-seven, so it's not technically, it's just a, in perpetuity.
Sure, okay.
If you're okay with that, that's, that's the only changes.
I think uh looking over it, we did catch one more mistake, it doesn't have the correct, the current chairman, council chairman on there, so that would need to get changed.
And it is, and the copy that we have, it is right in line. Or it has a straight through on it.
Yeah, he.
Yeah, just the only thing we had to refer to was the uh the red lines.
This is the agreement, you need to protect a resolution that offers you to sign the interlevel. And that number would be twenty twenty-four dash zero three, that's the resolution.
We all sign, just you.
You have to have a resolution, the statute says you have to have a resolution to pass an interlevel, but all it doesn't say you're approving.
Yeah, okay. That's great, thank you, Chair. So I entertain a motion to approve the resolution and that's for us to sign our local agreements.
So.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Commissioner Basenberry, a second from Commissioner Sheenan. And I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand.
So by passing that resolution, we also need to make a motion now.
The resolution adopts the interlevel to your.
So we need a new, I'm sorry, so we need a new resolution for every interlevel, I'm just curious.
Every interlevel agreement requires a resolution.
Thank you.
And they have to adopt substantially similar resolutions, is what the statute says.
So Teresa being the chair of Solid Waste District, the board of the Solid Waste District will have to agree.
Yes, they have to through their own resolution.
There's this, there is a spot for you to sign on that one. For that one. Okay, and then the Humane Society agreement, we, I just. Yeah, and it's a one-page, there's literally nothing different, it's the same as it was uh last year, the price is the same, everything is the same, so. I have that here, it is reviewed.
Twenty-five thousand, so.
Yeah.
I move to approve this agreement as presented.
I'll second, and then just with a little discussion, um I know with inflation and raising costs, I don't know the last time that was increased, but I do know they run on a shoestring budget.
Last increase was four years ago.
Was it four years ago?
Yeah.
It was rather recent, I don't have that information from you, but I can get it for you. Okay, um and I do know that they.
Went from twenty thousand to twenty-five thousand in two thousand twenty.
I apologize, I thought it was longer than that. And in fact, what I was saying, they know that they definitely run on a very small budget. I know that they provide a lot of services to the county and also a lot of the stray animals that we have to deal with, so I think going forward, maybe next year, we should think about increasing that amount.
Sure, we can certainly look at that. That would just need to be something that we would budget for and counsel with approved during the session, but at this point, I think they're really content with the twenty-five thousand, I haven't heard anything otherwise, so.
Yeah, I don't want to change it now.
I think. I can tell, for the twenty-five thousand.
We need to sign.
I'm just a little long, I forgot to look at it, and then I entertain a motion to approve the area.
There is a motion, second.
Got you, got you. So I did have a motion from Rob, second from Teresa, to approve, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same, and that passes. So uh earlier today, did Mark leave, Mark, you're still here. Earlier today, we were introduced to the idea of the Daughters of Revolution planting a tree on the courthouse lawn, this isn't an agenda item, it's an addition. And we had some questions about the type of tree and the placement, and if, if there'd be any damage to courthouse lawn and, you know, lots, lots of questions, but we liked the idea, and um we kind of kicked around the idea of approving this and then allowing for you to have a second level of approval. And I don't know how that, how that works for you, or.
We've worked with her in the past, the plant industry.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And when you do that, um you make sure it's like native and non-invasive and all of that, okay?
Yes.
I would make a motion to approve the request with Mark as a level one percent.
Second, I have a motion in a second to approve a request from the Daughters of Revolution to plant a tree on the courthouse lawn. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor, raise your right hand, opposed the same, I'll get back to you for. Okay, uh the next item on the agenda is payroll and accounts payable claims approval.
I had a chance to go up Friday and looked at most all of them, I know pressure shouldn't have finished it. I would make a motion to approve payroll.
Second.
I have a motion in a second to approve payroll, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Motion carries.
And the last claim I was able to take a look at this afternoon, as Commissioner Basenberry noted, and uh everything was fine, she took care of most of it Friday, I believe. So I would move to approve accounts payable.
Second. Second.
Motion is second to approve accounts payable. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same of that. Yeah. So after last meeting, I heard from Tanwa and an error was discovered on the, on the meeting minutes that we had approved. So I know that Tanwa had emailed those to us, had to do, the error was with the board appointments for commissioners in two thousand and four. And so we've made an amendment to the minutes and I would entertain a motion to approve that. So.
Second.
I have a motion in a second, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same. Then next up, we have a meeting minutes for our limestone bits that occurred on January sixteenth, at ten, I believe, ten AM. Ten thirty.
It's ten forty in the minutes?
Yeah. And we can approve those minutes as presented?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second, I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hands, opposed the same of that. That goes with this. This is accounts payable claims. And next up, we have our meeting minutes for January sixteenth. Does everyone have a chance to review? January sixteenth meeting minutes as presented.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in a second to approve the meeting minutes. I'll call for the vote, all those in favor raise your right hand. Opposed the same of that passes. Uh, this time we'll open up for public comment. Is there anyone who would like to speak during public comment today?
Chad?
Yes, sir.
I do have a question. Hi, Andy, hello. On the interlevel agreement we have tomorrow, Jim Arterby, the Chair of County Council, could you just explain why council, so tomorrow we have a question, why can't council have to?
Before I look at it for that question, can I, can I look at it in the email?
Sure. Just, just in case it comes directly.
Yeah.
I'm wondering, I'm doing questions here.
Yeah.
And also I had made note, I'd asked, because they all need a resolution as well. If they need to pass this.
Yes.
They don't need that same resolution. I mean, I've said the resolution number, but they don't need just something to think about. Can we do that or?
Yeah, I'm changing the name around and said it to the, yeah, I can do that.
Could you forward that to me?
I'll put all you want to.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Time for me. Okay.
Are we meeting?
I get to see tonight.
And then that letter that we, we have for there that.
Yeah, I'm totally fine with that. Are you guys okay with that as well? Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I think it's the same letter, yeah.
Or I've got one and take you last Friday.
Okay.
This is the one right here, this is the council one over here. I got yours.
Great. Hate to throw it on you last minute. You probably have another meeting to get to after this one.
I don't have a meeting tonight.
Do you have anything to add to that?
Yeah.
Anyone else for a public comment? Uh, Tiffany, anything to add?
Um, no, I just have three letters that Nathan provided for redevelopment. You guys have already approved it already, but they'll be signed.
Okay. Yep, so this is for Teresa, Frank Kessler, John Myers on redevelopment, which we've already taken that action, so.
You found my email, that's my fancy purse. What's that? Said you found my email.
Commissioner Basenber, anything to add? I'm sorry, I skipped the, the thing to add for you. Commissioner Sheenan.
I have nothing to add.
And I have nothing to add, so at this time I will adjourn meeting. Thank you for coming.